To order roll call, please.
Justy Wells.
Here.
Justy Lawson.
Here.
Justy Marcos.
Here.
Vice President Yoselka.
Here.
President McAvoy.
Present. All right, so. Let's see. Communication and close session will internet connection tonight, so I'm going to do the best I can. And if I need to turn it over to one of my colleagues to help out, I'll do that. Or I'll use the chat, we'll get there together in Zoom world. So I did want to report out in the closed session that we had from five to six P M. Number three point one conference with real property negotiators. We basically heard from staff and consultants and council. And we agreed with recommendations to move forward. So they will be doing that with the negotiations. And then on three point two C S E A negotiations update and three point three. R C T A negotiations update. We did have a conversation for a half an hour of the closed session, but we did not finish our conversation. So we will be continuing that closed session at the. In the the regular meeting as part of our agenda. So I'll ask for it in addition to the agenda. Before we adjourn, we would go into closed session. So we can get to that when we have changed to the agenda. Ported out all right, well, welcome everyone. Let me put up pull up my little welcome. Us certainly are. Happy to have community members being with us. I posted links in the chat as well as how to connect for Spanish translation. In. In El Chat. Si necesita interpretación española por favor llame al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero. Cinco uno tres siete y presión a ocho ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno pound. Para la contraseñar. All right. Let's see if you would like to speak to the board, please fill out the Google Doc and I've put that in the chat chat as well. It looks like tonight we'll have three minutes per speaker. And I'll call on you when we get to that agenda item. And it looks like they're all on the school reopening right now. Let's see, as just a reminder, this board meeting is for board business. And we do certainly welcome public comment. And we've used this opportunity as our board meetings to also. Gives an update to the community on where we're at, particularly with COVID pandemic reopening. Plans in person this year, next year, the whole bit. So we know there's been a lot of interest in that, and we certainly welcome you here tonight to hear more. All right, I think that's sort of the housekeeping. And do I have any changes to the agenda? As I said, I would like to add the closed session that will be after nineteen point one.
I was gonna ask that we moved sixteen point one, the audit report earlier. I'm not exactly sure where I was thinking, maybe just before twelve, the discussion items. That way.
Yeah, I think that will be. Go ahead, Mike.
I was just saying so that the presenter could wouldn't have to sit through the whole meeting to get to their their section, which should be a relatively quick update.
All right, so we could add. The sixteen information on financial audit report that would go after eleven, the bond program action items. Is that what you're recommending, Mike?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay. All right, any other changes to the agenda? I think most of the action items need to stay on action. And we have a lot of consent items. And then a conversation I know on in person and reopening and all of that. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the two changes? That we talked about?
So moved.
I'll second.
Maria and Mike, roll call vote.
Justy Wells.
I.
Justy Lawson.
I.
Justy Marcos.
I.
Vice President Yoselka.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. Okay, oral communication, let me just double check something just came in. Give me just a minute, let me look. I think I think we'll take. Yeah, we do have an oral communication. So Maria Stockton would like to comment on classified employees. And I think the only place we have, well, we have that in our agenda as part of the closed session. I know there's also. She didn't. Yeah, Maria, maybe you can chat, let me know, did you was this part of fourteen point one? Or one of the action items, or is it more generally about classified employees?
I don't think Maria is here, I don't see her name.
Oh. Oh, she just put this in, how funny. Okay. Maria, if you're here under a different name, raise your hand. Okay.
You're now, is she?
Oh, I do see her. Okay, she just came in. Why don't you move, yeah, Maria, I wasn't clear on the subject matter, you is it just for oral communication?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, yeah, yes, it is, Alicia.
Okay, okay, please, please go ahead, Maria, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. And I do apologize, I just ran in the door from work. As you know, you know, there's tons of work that needs to be done. And so I apologize, I'm not more prepared. I just, I wanted to speak again for the classified employees to the board to please. Please show that you're hearing the classified employees when they talk or anybody when they talk at the board meetings. I know the standard answer to a comment is. The board can't comment that can't comment on that because it's M O U being discussed or it's a negotiations. But in the past, the the board members responded a little differently that at least recognized that we hear what you're saying. But I want the board to know that the majority of the classified employees are very like myself, very tired. Worn out physically, mentally, emotionally. We have been the essential workers at the work sites for all this time. And we hear, oh, we appreciate the work that you've gone and done above and beyond your your own jobs. But you have to understand that a reason of that the teachers have to do different lesson plans or something. Really doesn't cut it when it comes to extra compensation, just to see them come back. Our first M O U, the district did recognize and acknowledge. That essential workers at the site did deserve to get a little extra, and it was called risk pay. And that was only put in, but it was put in for a while to acknowledge being at the sites. Now I understand Redwood City just passed something of giving employees five dollars an hour more for. The the work that they're doing out in the with the community. I would really appreciate, and I know the classified would appreciate. The boards being a little bit more sensitive, I'll say, and I know it's hard for you guys because you there's you're limited in what you can do. But a recognition of the work instructional assistants were trained, just like the teachers. They learned all the programs of the teachers to support the teachers and the children. And still they're not recognized for doing the same thing as the teachers. And you you've already heard about all the rest of the classified. So we would appreciate. The board working with the district instead of us hearing from the district, thank you, but know. That acknowledgement is made in a way that shows that we are recognized, respected, and the district cares. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maria, for your comments, I appreciate them. And the board heard what you said, and I did want to just say that we very much value our classified employees. I know that we've said that in a number. And certainly, I'm always speaking the praises of our wonderful classified staff, everybody from our custodians to bus drivers to instructional assistants and everyone. And I know I can speak for the whole board that we very much value. Your contribution, the classified contribution to our school district. So thank you for the comments, we heard them, as you know, we're not able to comment during the oral communication, but I know we heard them, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're on to, oh, thank you, Maria, thanks for being here. All right. Number nine, nine point one showcase of student projects in Redwood City. And tonight, I'm so happy to have our wonderful principal from Roy Cloud. Miss Diane Priestess. Welcome, and she's going to be presenting on a social emotional learning program that Roy Cloud has. So I'll turn it over to Diane to introduce what we're going to see, and then Kyle will bring up the link for us.
There we go.
Hi, welcome, welcome to our board meeting, we're so happy.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here. Good evening, Board President McAvoy, members of the board and Dr. Baker. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share some of the work you're doing at Roy Cloud. To support our students and socially and emotionally. With their well being during this time of pandemic, distance learning, and now as we're transitioning back to campus. We'll go to the next slide. Our of years ago, the support of our P T O and their financial allocations. Through their fund of need fund of need program. And it arose out of a need based on our twenty eighteen nineteen climate survey. And we noticed areas of need specifically for our middle school students, including a sense of belonging. To the school and their lack of connection to our school culture and climate. We also noticed some challenges with our primary students in how to express themselves appropriately. Their name, their feelings, and then communicate those feelings and then have positive interactions with their peers. So we took to working with a social emotional coordinator and S E L coordinator. And we came up with this structure, which you can see here, which can follow our students from kindergarten all the way through eighth grade, starting with self management. And ending as they leave us with specific goals in mind for their life and a sense of purpose. And then with a structure in place, and go to the next slide. We also needed a system of implementation, so I want to give a shout out to one of our teachers, Anna Rivoli. Who is a big character strong champion, and she led us to this curriculum. And trainings which focus on fostering the whole child with vertically aligned lessons to teach S E L and character side by side. And you can see some of the skills and competencies that they have there. So we had our structure and we had our system, we wanted to find something that was really easy for the teachers to do in distance learning. Because there there were so many other things that they were learning at the same time. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So in these next few slides, I'm just going to go through briefly some of the things that we're doing at school. And at the end, I'll share some of the outcomes. And then I have a little video clip that one of our classes made that I the very heartwarming. So we we studied a monthly character trait, and that's pretty common, a lot of of the other schools do that too. And so every month we rolled out a character trait, we had different activities to go with that. And Kyle, could you go to the next slide? What was what was so helpful with our S E L coordinator was that he would roll out lessons at the beginning of the week to the teachers. And they just kind of selected from the lessons. And we asked teachers at the beginning of every day to do some sort of activity to build connections through this distance learning space. So here's one example of doing a body scan. There's there are simple things like doing a check in of one to five, how are you feeling and why? Would you rather the questions like that? One of our teachers really likes yoga, so he was leading some yoga exercises with his students. So it's just, it was a way to build connection and also support that social emotional well being of our students. And go ahead to the next slide. Here's a sample, so of some first grade work when we were studying respect, I know it's a little bit hard to read, but. Helping my mom with chores, listening to my mom. You know, being open minded and flexible, which I think is so cute from a first grader. I mean, that shows the depth of what what these lessons can do. Okay, next slide. Part of the weekly lessons were character dares, and these are really fun. This is a character dare on kindness, and this is a student character dare. And there were character dares for each of the character traits. And to teachers challenged our students to do these, the students had the option. But if they didn't choose the dare, they also had to talk about why they didn't choose the dare if they were uncomfortable with or whatever it might be. So they still gain some insight and participation. So so you can see that they're kind of fun, offer to help each of your family members with one task today. And so that was a challenge for them, and it gets them to think outside of themselves and to think about other people and what can I do to help this other person? So that was that was really fun. Okay, and the next next slide, we can move to that. And so we know that in order to really shift the culture in anything in any community, it's not just about the children, it's about changing adult behavior as well. And so we also put character dares, sent them out to the family. In our Thunderbolt newsletter, we posted staff character dares in our week in our principal's bulletin every week. And then there are also administrative character dares for Christie, my assistant principal and myself. That we, you know, checked ourselves on to make sure that we were also being mindful of paying attention to other people and. You know, following along with the same curriculum. Okay, next slide. So so getting back to the students. We met weekly for virtual assemblies, and we did that by, you know, chunks of grade level teams. And that was a lot of fun, we focused on the character dares, we got to know the students in a more intimate, smaller setting. Shared little videos and had, you know, generated discussions. And then we also on our virtual Wednesdays, on our asynchronous Wednesdays, this is a slide. From our librarian Stephanie Lara. And she helped develop a webpage for the library where kids can click on these books and get some interactive. Information about books, and this theme again was kindness, so I want to put that out for you. Okay, next slide, thank you. Our counselor Tosa was very instrumental in starting up many clubs for all different age levels and all different purposes. This is one example of the club that she started, it started out as a kindness club. And this was developed by our special day class who are third through fifth graders. And they wanted to work on the concept of inclusion. And the class had a goal to lead a club that would include both regular education and special education students. And staff, and that would focus on kindness and building relationships with each other. And they wanted everyone to know that it was important for us to be able to notice our differences and appreciate those differences with each other through kindness and respect. And they came up with this name for the club, Cloudy with a Chance of Kindness, that was cute. For any of you know, the children's book was Cloudy with a Chance of Meatballs, something like that. So anyway. And they're they're in the middle of our poster contest right now, thank you, Kyle. And then speaking of inclusion, we also have a club. Erin Washburn reached out to us, and this was an idea also that our Tosa counselor. Had been playing around with, and then when Erin reached out and they got together and then figured out, okay, so they created this club. And this is a club for for students who are, you know, having questions about their identities, going through transitions and just need a safe place to talk and to be. And they named themselves the Rainbow Cloud Club. So we have clubs for everybody now, and it's very encouraging, we really like that. Thank you, next. One of our middle school electives collaborated with our S E L coordinator and a U C Berkeley student, and they met, and they challenged everybody to thirty days of kindness. And this is also from Character Strong, and you can see from the day one. How the activities don't take a lot of time, but they're really are fun and really thought provoking. About, you know, writing, writing one thing you love about yourself now, what you loved about yourself in the past, but then thinking about your future self. And that was that generated a lot of discussion for our kids, like what was my, what is my future self going to look like? And how can I create that future self that I love? So that was that was very fun, too. So all these are very fun and engaging activities, but very have a lot of deep meaning. Okay, the next slide, please. So we tied this in with Houston Kraft, and he's there on the left hand side, he's the founder of co founder of Character Strong. We tie this kindness campaign with his book called Deep Kindness. And I based my principal's talks on that this year, but not really talks, we had meetups and we had a book club. And that was a lot of fun. We we gave away books to the first ten people that signed up, and then we met, we meet every month. After reading a couple of chapters and we discuss, just really open ended, and it's very open. We have, you can see from the picture, we have students that participate, we have teachers, we have staff, we have parents. It's really a lot of fun, and Houston's there too. And just the, again, the variety of the conversations that come up because of all the different walks of life that the people are from who are in the group. So that so that's just another way we tied that in to our social emotional well being. And we're ready for the next slide. And so Houston, rather than, you know, we he's he's quite a celebrity now, so rather than paying to come to our book club last month in March and visit. He wanted, he said, could you make a donation to my charity in Haiti, which is an educational foundation to educate the students, children there? And so our middle school students took to task, they gathered amount of money, and they made this logo, and then they, which is now on the school's webpage. And so that's very exciting that they were able to reach out beyond themselves and beyond our Roy Cloud community to somebody across the world to support that. Okay, Kyle. And they even collaborated with Woodside High School and their leadership group. So we were even in the Woodside High School newsletter, so I thought that was pretty great, how our middle school kids took the initiative to reach out to some friends across the way. Thank you, next slide. And so as we transition back to the classroom, we're still here to support our families. We have parent ed nights every month, and this one we had this month was Name It to tame it. Where, you know, it's just another activity again to get parents connected with their kids, and how are you feeling? And how can we tame that feeling by naming it and talking about it? Thank you, Kyle. So this is all great, but what is the outcome? So ours counselor Tosa took a survey of random number of students, we there's actually three hundred eighty six students in this group of fourth through eighth grade. So she sampled two of the two hundred eighty two, and you can see from the chart, you know, twenty percent felt excellent, how they were coping with distance learning. And just overall, there was just about ten percent that were really struggling with that. So I I attribute that to the staff that was really dedicated to implement this and really make those connections with their kids. So I want to give a shout out to my staff and thank them for that. And then we have one more slide here of a survey question, how are you feeling today? And you can see a comparison from September to January. You know, not as angry, not as upset, not as overwhelmed, a little bit more excited and happy. And about the same and relaxed, so I did take that as a good sign. Thank you, Kyle. Okay, so this last one, and when we start, this is, I think we're going to have to go back a couple of slides, because this is a little bit in the middle, it looks like. But this is a project that our third through fifth grade S D C class created, and I know some of you, it's been shared with some of you. But it's just so very touching, and it's a good culmination, it's the last thing for for my presentation tonight. They also worked with a U C Berkeley student, Victoria, and our S E L coordinator and one of our. Active parents. Elena Lavina, who is a great voice for inclusion. And they read the book, and now they're going to read the book to you and then share what their wonders are. Okay. Perfect. And that's Mrs. K, can we turn the sound up? There we go.
Kyle, I think because you're muted, we can't.
Yeah, it says. Yeah, because Kyle's muted, we can't hear it.
Ordinary kids.
Sure, do ordinary things, I ride a bike, I eat ice cream.
I, wait, what?
I just don't look ordinary.
I don't look like that.
My mom said I'm unique, she said I I'm a wonder, my dog Daisy agrees.
But some people don't see that I am a wonder. All they see is how different I look.
Sometimes they stare at me, they point, oh, they even say mean things behind my back, but I can hear them.
It hurts my feelings.
It hurt Daisy's feelings too.
When that happens, I put on my helmet.
I put Daisy's helmet on too, and then we.
First off, up, 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 up through the clouds.
Across the galaxy.
All the way to Pluto.
You say hello to old friends.
From far away, the earth looks so small, I can't see people, but I know that there are billions of people who have all different colors, people who walk and talk differently. People who look different like me. The earth is big enough for all kinds of people.
I know I can't change the way I look.
But maybe, just maybe.
People can change the way they see.
If they do, they'll see that I may wonder.
Will all wonder.
And. They'll. See that there wonders too.
Look with kindness, and you will always find wonder.
My name is Bemmy, and my wonder is gaming.
Hi, my name is Leslie, and my wonder is that I'm friendly and kind and creative.
Hi, my name is Jill, and my wonder is about the I am grateful.
I am about.
I happy.
Hi, my name is Anthony, and my wonder is that I am creative.
Hi, my name is Michael, my wonder is I'm gonna join.
Hello, my name is Grant, and my wonder is that I am kind.
Hi, my name is Mariana, and my wonder is that I am good at drawing.
Hi, my name is Otter, my wonder is that I'm grateful.
Hi, my name is Damian, and my wonder is I'm a gamer.
Okay, that that's it for me tonight, and just thank you for letting me share that with you. I'm just really proud of the work we've done and see a difference in our kids, so thank you. Um, I'm just really proud of the work we've done and see a difference in our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you Diane very much. Diane, is this the first, you just started that this year, correct?
Yes, yes.
And it's sponsored, it's sponsored by the PTO?
Um, our PTO, um, yes, we had a, um, we have a silent auction and then a certain portion of that money is dedicated to a certain cause. Um, and this, this cause was fund to need. Uh, I mean, sorry, it's called Fund to Need and it was dedicated towards SEL. Yeah. So, very exciting, very exciting.
Yes, thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Diane very much and thanks to Roy Cloud. And as you know, we've been having conversations about the importance of social emotional learning. So this is it in practice. So thank you.
Yes.
All right, so we're on, oh, yeah, thank you. All right, we're on to, uh, the bond program consent items. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Janet and Mike, roll call vote.
Justy Wells.
Aye.
Justy Lawson.
Aye.
Justy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President U. Silco.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, and there's no pro, bond program action items. Thank you very much. I saw our bond team on the panelists. Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Very much. And I guess you're free to go. Thanks for all your hard work, long list of activities this, this go around. All right. Okay, so we're on to the audit report. Dr. Baker and Priscilla, would you like to introduce your item?
I'll let Priscilla introduce our consultant.
Yeah, uh, Nathan Edelman is the partner, uh, for, uh, Bike Bailey and, um, he's going to be presenting to, for us today, the June thirty, twenty twenty audit report. But I'm looking at that tendies unless it's the call in there.
I'm, I'm here.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Hi, Nathan.
Hey, hello, hello. Oh, okay, great. Well, good to see everybody. Thank you for, for having me. Let me just put this thing up on the screen. I won't go over every detail, um, although I'm sure that we have hours to talk about accounting. Um, I, I, I've met previously with the, the audit committee and we have gone over this in much more detail. If there is anything, I'm, I'm happy to dive into it. But I'll, I'll just go over a few highlights that I think are important. First, first of all, my name is Nathan Edelman with Bike Bailey. And I am the independent external auditor. The, the purpose of the audit, the scope of the audit is first and foremost to ensure that the financial information, that the, that the financial statements, which you have here, are complete and accurate and that they are presented in accordance with all of the, all of the rules and regulations. I realize this is, this is June thirty, twenty twenty. It's almost a year now. See, the numbers themselves maybe are not the most relevant anymore, but this is a historical document of the district's financial position for, for twenty twenty. And I'll, I'll tell you what, what is important if we go up to our, our audit opinion, we have, we have a few opinions. But this is, you know, the, the audit opinion is whether or not the financial statements are complete and accurate. This opinion here has a lot of words in it that, a lot of, a lot of fancy words prescribed by the standards. But kind of the, the point that matters the most is in the opinion section. Uh, in, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above are fairly presented in all material respects. It sounds very boring, but this is the most exciting thing that an auditor will tell you. It's a, it's what we call a clean or unmodified audit opinion. It doesn't mean that we have any, it's not an opinion on whether or not the district did a good or bad job, but it means that the financial statements are reliable, they are complete and accurate information. That means that you can extrapolate that other information, budget reports, other information that you are receiving from management is reliable and it's good. If you were to have us come in and say that the financial statements required adjustments to the general fund, cash, payables, receivables, that would mean that other information is, is, it could be unreliable. And that is not the, that is not the case here. This is a, a positive thing for the school district. The only other thing, I guess, I'll just point out because I think it is helpful is, let's see. No, not, not here. Hold on. Bear with me. Let me just skip ahead a few pages. This is on, on page seventy-one. It's a, it's a summary of kind of a trending schedule for, for the school district and it shows for the general fund because of all the funds of the district, the general fund in particular. The ending fund balance, the unavailable, or sorry, unrestricted available fund balance of the general fund is probably the most sensitive piece of the financial statements for the district. And in particular, you can look at some context of the, at, at the ending, the reserves at the end of a particular year, end of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, in relation to expenditures that could be draws on those reserves. And you can, you can see kind of a downward trend in this percentage, which is the buffer space that the district has. But this is still a very healthy, at the end of June thirty, twenty twenty, that's a very healthy reserve percentage. If the number was, say, fifty percent, then the question would be, well, you know, you're hoarding money. You should be, you could be, you know, you could be spending money on, on students. If the number was one percent or a number that's below the state required reserve ratios, then the district is in more imminent financial, you know, danger. You don't, you don't have space for unanticipated events. So five point seven percent is healthy. That's a, that's a good thing. Other than, than that, um, I, I, I know it's, I skipped over, you know, ninety percent of the pages, but it, it's a clean audit report and there's not a whole lot to talk about. Accounting isn't supposed to be too exciting, I guess. So if they're, I'll, I'll turn it over to the group and if there's questions or something that I should elaborate on, on further, I'd be happy to, to try and answer those the best I can.
Just like to add, uh, Nathan, thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, Mike Wells and I are the two board members on the audit committee. And Mike, would you like to say a little something? I have an unstable connection. So maybe you can talk out, uh, you know, your, your perspective from our meeting with Nathan going over the audit in more detail.
Yeah, I know. It was, it was in more detail, but still at a level that was, uh, easy to digest. So Nathan, thanks for taking the time to walk us through it, especially for me, it's my first time going through the audit report. Um, the one thing that might be worth just touching on is that there was the, the one, um, material finding, which was not a statement in the wrong numbers, but maybe you could just clarify that for the, for the, for the other board members, just so they know what that was and that why it was, um, you know, not.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Actually, yeah. Thank you for, for bringing that up. Um, there, there, there's, if you were to go, you flip to the back of the report, there, there's a section that talks about internal controls. And the scope of the audit is not to go and, you know, search for all sorts of internal controls and, and say whether or not they're good or bad. But if we come across internal control deficiencies, those get reported in the back of the report. And the one that we're talking about is regarding capital assets. And the reason why I say it's probably not, I, I don't want, I don't want to make it sound more alarming than it is. And that all of the capital assets that the district has are, you know, recorded in accordance with the accounting standards. And this has nothing to do with the bond program, nothing to do with, with compliance with, with Proposition thirty-nine. But there are specific, I guess, roll forwards of ways that they are to be presented in accordance with the accounting standards and those did require adjustments. But they don't impact the general fund. It's not that the district, that, that the adjustments had anything to do with reserves or, or things that would have any kind of, um, operating effect. It's more for the, uh, there, there's, there's two sets of financial statements. Actually, one is on this modified accrual basis of accounting, another one is full accrual. And that's only involving the, the full accrual financial statements and they get grouped in with things such as pension and, and OPEB and it's looking at very, very long-term items. And, and so that finding in the back of the report is really just involving, involving, uh, capital assets. But it is important that they are presented correctly. And I've had more detailed discussions with the folks at the district and they understand and they are, are committed to making sure that they are right the, the first time around.
Thanks. And thanks to the business office for making it so that the audit was, uh, come, came through clean as well. So Priscilla and your team, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I would actually echo that because for Priscilla and her team, honestly, having a clean or, you know, whatever audit opinion has nothing to do with me as an auditor. We are just the messenger. It is them that has to answer the questions and deal with us and get us all the documents in the middle of working from home and all those other challenges. So I would, I would just repeat that. I think that's an, an important thing to wear.
So, um, thank you Nathan also. And, uh, if you can also comment a little bit about the bond performance audit.
Oh, sure. Actually, I don't have that one up, but I will. Yeah, we did do, we did complete the bond performance audit. That's how I know the other thing doesn't impact it. The, the performance audit is focused on the district's use of the general obligation bonds. Those are restricted to certain things per this Proposition thirty-nine. And then furthermore, the district's restricted to what they can use those, those funds on. It's capital projects that are aligned with the district's facilities master plan, aligned with the, the bond ballot language. And we also have, have that report that's been issued and that's a clean, unmodified report. There were no audit findings with respect to the, the performance audit and, um, and shoot, I, I don't have that one here, but yeah, there were, there were no audit findings, which means that the, the district spent the money on eligible activities within the allowable use of funds.
And Nathan, it is attached to our board agenda, your audit report for both, um, the twenty twenty, the June thirtieth, twenty twenty, as well as the, uh, bond. So the public can see that and the board has had an opportunity to look at it. Um, so any, uh, comments or questions from other board members?
I'll just say.
All right. Well, I want to say thank you. Oh, go ahead, Janet.
It's okay. I just want to say thank you both to, um, Nathan and Priscilla and team. Um, I, my husband used to do audits, so I do have a sense of appreciation for, you know, the work that you do, Nathan, but also the amount of work that, um, Priscilla, your team, um, goes through to, um, get these audits completed. Um, and, and it's really important just for our community, for the public to, you know, have confidence and faith in, in the district, um, and the accounting that's happening here. So, um, just a huge thank you to everybody and to, um, I can Elisa too for sitting on that, um, committee because that's definitely not one that I prefer to sit on.
They have, they have the best committee assignments, the accounting committee.
Yeah. Yeah, and I just want to, uh, say thank you very much. I know when I first started on the board many years ago and we would have the audit, uh, there would be more issues. Again, there was nothing ever major, but there was more small things and we've really gotten it down to there's very little, uh, issues that the auditors are coming up with. And like you said, Nathan, I mean, one of the things we wanted to be assured of is, is the money accounted for properly? Is it being spent, uh, the way that we're saying it's being spent? Are we being transparent and accountable to our taxpayers, to our community? And the answers to those was yes. And that you also said that, you know, you don't always see this with every school district. So, um, so I think that gave Mike Wells and I a lot of comfort, you know, our conversations with you.
Maybe I can repeat that for everyone too, just because, you know, it, it's easy. You might always see, you know, no findings here, no findings there. I think audits never have any findings. I, I probably see a few more audits and it is normal. Uh, there are lots of findings that happen all the time. Many are quite serious, some are not. Here at, at Redwood City in particular, it's been very clean. The accounting records are, are, are clean. It's one of the easier audits. I think that's a good thing for the district.
Well, that is a good way to end the audit discussion. Thank you, Nathan, and thank you, Priscilla and our budget team. And thank you, Dr. Baker, for your leadership as well. All right, um, any other comments before we move on to the next agenda item? All right. Thank you very much, Nathan. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And we will move on. Okay, we're on to twelve point one, spring expansion of school district, January reopening. Dr. Baker and team.
Really perfect. Very good. Um, who has, I don't know, does Kyle have the slides? Is that the person? Yes, Kyle. No, Kyle.
Which slides are we talking about here?
The, the slide presentation for the reopen, you know, that are, that I do every board meeting.
Okay, I will, I will look. I would believe that Liz sent those to me. Hang on one second.
I have them, John, if you'd like me to upload them.
Can you do that, Liz?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I don't seem to have them, Liz.
Thank you, Liz. So great. Good evening, everyone, all board members and the community. So we're going to continue with our spring expansion and then talk just a little bit about the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, we are still in the process of planning before I bring a specific, uh, plan to you for the next few weeks. So, uh, next slide, please, Liz. Go on to the next one. So here's a great picture of, uh, two energetic boys. We're really happy to be back at school. This, uh, was taking place, uh, last week at, uh, the, the Selby Lane. And, uh, I had the opportunity and sort of Janet, uh, this week to be there to, um, do a video for the bond team that will show the upgrades that took place at Selby Lane, other than that. And, uh, other than the Selva, I'm sorry. And, um, it looks fantastic. If you get a chance to visit board members, office members, even community, um, when we are ready to come back and you can visit schools on a regular basis, that it's really looks totally different, especially the entrance to, uh, the, the Selby is remarkably different than what it ever looked like. What we have here for you tonight, these are totals as of today of our total population. Um, in-person learning, there's a total of three thousand nine hundred fifty students. Full distance learning, there are two thousand seven hundred nineteen. This number seems to be changing a bit each day as more students decide, um, to come back in person. Uh, they, their parents feel that, you know, they can return. Maybe they're hesitant at one time. Space has opened up and we'll talk about that in a moment. And parents are amenable to sending their children back. So you'll see these numbers tend to move in the next few days, next few weeks, as I go through this presentation. So instruction and support for all students. It's, you know, it, we're always asked, are you giving the same type of instruction to students that give you those students who are at distance learning? Yes, we are, you know, um, they're not in person getting the instruction that they would normally, excuse me, get in person with their teacher, but they're getting it virtually during a time of the day. And there are also requirements for the minimum of minutes that one needs to attain, obtain each day. We have teachers that are in special assignment to continue to support the classroom teachers with students in both in-person and full distance learning. None of that has stopped. So whether you're in person or whether you're a child at home experiencing your instruction, vis a vis your Chromebook, you are still being supported. We have our professional development coaches that still continue to support hybrid lesson planning for both in-person and full distance learning to support our teachers. Principals continue to provide activities on asynchronous Wednesdays. You'll see some of them doing assemblies. There'll be check-ins with the principals, whether it's a student, whether it's a parent, there are virtual field trips and other items that take place during this day. And teachers do have office hours, whether they're in person or whether they are doing instruction virtually with students and families who need additional support. So each each time that we present, we present the school along with um, excuse me, along with the presentation of us in uh in the past with all since starting for quite a while, then we had the pilot program, then we moved again in January. And now um, we want to show you how many students are at Lloyd Cloud. The last time we presented a slide on Lloyd Cloud, the numbers were not correct. Now, these numbers changed again recently. Uh, these are the latest numbers from Principal Priestess, where there are a total of six hundred and sixty-seven students. There are five hundred and five students who are in person, and you have one hundred and sixty-two who are in full distance learning. Next slide is. These are some pictures that I I know Diane is still uh with. So Diane, if you would like to give us the insight of the pictures you have uh shared with us.
Absolutely, and and thanks. I'm I'm honored to be a part of this presentation with bringing kids back. Um, it's been very exciting. I know it's taken us a long time to get here, um, but um, we're just all a lot happier. Um, the kids are happy and I know all our adults on campus are happy when the kids are there. Um, we've actually had students on our campus since November. Um, we started uh with the pilot program with our um middle school resource teacher Stephanie Papalardo. And she had students on campus, like I said, since November, um, the four days a week. And um, that continued um when we reopened in January and we also then invited back um two kindergarten classes with Denise Chappell and Tammy McGuire. Um, they both um are supporting an A M P M kindergarten, and that started, like I said, in January. They really looked at their parent survey and they had a full classroom of students that whose parents did wanted to keep them in distance learning. So they decided among the three teachers that Celeste May then would um continue with distance learning in order to honor the parents' wishes for that. Um, in January, we also opened learning hubs in grades one through five um and worked over the next couple of months to fill those classes to a capacity of ten each. And those learning hubs were supervised by coaches from La Garza. And kids were still getting their online instruction from their certificated teacher, but it was a way to get them to school and help them stay focused with another adult in the room. So that was that was um exciting part of our transition. Um, finally, as we moved into March with the vision of reopening for all students in April, we facilitated grade level tours. Um, the four pictures on your left are tours from our middle school. We um and um they they had a they had a good time going through, um, you know, they didn't. We took them around the school. We talked about, you know, the protective masks and, you know, distancing and bring your water bottle and things like that. But they were really more interested in just sitting down and chatting with each other. And so we we knew that. And so we adjusted the tour for them, and there they are visiting, hanging out, doing some activities. Part of the tour was showing them the infirmary, and that's what the couple girls are at the top. Um, and then as teachers were on campus getting ready, you know, they would pop their heads out, come on in. And so this is Chelsea Williams class, and they went in and they're just having fun and they're pretending they're sitting in the classroom. So the picture on the right with the balloons is our just our first day back. Um, one of our first grade teachers just bought balloons for the whole quad area. So it's really fun and exciting to be in that one quad with all the balloons flying. Yeah, go ahead. Now you can switch. Thank you, Liz. Um, and this are just some samples from our first day. Um, what what you could see walking around campus, yay, you're back, and how the teachers decorated, and they were so excited to have the kids and and there's a classroom with um that you see the little air purifier up there in the front. It's kind of a blue rectangle that's in every room um and the kids spaced apart. So that's what we have there. And I think I have one more that just is an example of how we're all feeling to be back. Okay, and that's it. Thank you.
I had thanks so much. There was a lot of excitement at the different school sites as children were more children were coming back and I know that um some of us got to get out and see that. One of the concerns that uh came up by many of the site administrators was the traffic jams when parents were letting their children off at school sites. So I think many of them have um not to say that they're non-existent, but right now, to say that they're non-existent, but they're better than they were last week. So that was something that uh principals worked out with their communities. We also did let our Red City Police Department know, our Sheriff's Department know, our Atherton Police Department. And and but we still had quite a bit of traffic. And not only did we really start up uh last week, but it was also the high school district did too. So um, there was a lot going on and traffic coming back in the mornings and also afternoons for pickup. So let's, we're going to talk a little bit about San Mateo County framework updates. We have some slides here. And I'm going to let Wendy uh start with this one, but uh just before she starts, you know, we had this slide deck done probably about fourth, I think it was around four fifteen, something like that, the last finishing pieces on it. And then right around five o'clock, I get something from C D P H on outlook for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So um, I can't, it just changes all, it just every time you look around, there's a change. I'll go through a little bit of that with you. Um, but I haven't delved into it yet as it, I just got it, you know, right as we were finishing this up. So Wendy, let me allow you to take this over. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Good evening, everyone. So as in the past few board meetings, we receive updates, and this is the latest officially as of April sixth. And now, of course, this afternoon, we may have more that Dr. Baker will speak yet about. But regarding um traveling, so this chart is taken straight out of the pandemic framework, page thirty-six. For those of you that have it dog-eared on your desk like I do, uh, but this is a nice chart to take a look at travel. And I know we've passed spring break. But we have other, you know, we have Memorial Day on the horizon, then of course, as summer progresses, and who knows, there might be changes up until that point. But what's nice about this chart is it really delineates if you're not vaccinated, so assumingly students or fully vaccinated, which as as more adults are um becoming vaccinated, it gives us a nice guide on how we can manage um travel and so forth. I'm pleased to say that with all of the recent changes, just in the last two weeks, it really benefited us in human resources because we were able to utilize our learning hub teachers for for substitute situations right after spring break and um over these past ten days. And so once we pass these two weeks in general, just with absences and and people planning things and so forth, I think we're going to have more smooth sailing as we progress on. So it was nice to have some of these changes um just over the last two weeks. So this chart is here for your reference. Next slide, please. Along with um an additional change is testing. So this was interesting, page twenty-seven of the pandemic framework. Um, it's a nice graphic that really shows the need for testing and based on what color we're in, uh color zone. So as you know, in the winter months, we're in purple, then we moved to red, and then recently in March, moved to orange. And so this chart breaks down the need for testing and the recommendations for staff and for students. And we, of course, are in orange, close to yellow, but currently in orange. And what that means is that we are still required to give symptomatic and response testing to both students and staff. And symptomatic testing is really for individuals of that have symptoms of COVID nineteen, either at home or at school. And so the, in this particular situation, the school guidance requires that individuals stay home in case they're infectious and encourages them to seek testing. And we do have testing set up, of course, all throughout our district as an option for students and then required every two weeks for staff still. So even though the requirement for testing for staff is still in place, like in the red zone, we are continuing that right now in our district, although it is not required at this time. Uh, the second option is response testing. So this testing is used to identify positive individuals once a case has been identified in a given stable group. So it could be for symptomatic individuals or for asymptomatic individuals with known or suspected exposure to an individual affected. So these are more reactionary in nature, symptomatic and response testing, rather than proactively testing every two weeks, um like we needed to do in the red zone. So I wanted to update the board on this most recent information as well. Next slide, please. Yep, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Baker.
So you all are aware that um last week, a week ago Tuesday, in the afternoon, all of the um superintendents in San Mateo County received information that we were moving from six feet to three feet inside the classroom. So uh, we have started uh here in the district, started our planning stages. And we're looking at the size of the classrooms and they vary throughout the River City School District. Um, considering the number of students in classroom. And then considering the impact on the AM schedule, anything which changed. So the six feet still must be observed between a teacher's desk and students. And when we are utilizing the multi-use room slash cafeteria for lunches or breakfast, uh, students still need to adhere to a six-foot distance. When you're outside for lunch, um, you still adhere to a six-foot distance. That has not been changed yet. The only thing that has been changed is in the classroom with students at this point in time. The County Office of Education uh aligned their guidelines also with the San Mateo County Public Health Department. And so we're starting to look at this classroom by classroom in the district. Next slide. So uh, before the we Wendy was Wendy along with a great help from Martin. And then I went out to Ford, and that's one thing I've heard him do is to take teachers. I was with the kindergarten teachers at Ford today to look at the distancing of three feet with their um classrooms. Ms. Barstad, she does have small little desks that like these, but they're smaller. But Ms. Grigaro, Ms. Barish have tables in her classroom. The tables will not work for the three feet. We would next, we would need to get a small desk like this. Uh, like like Amy has, as far as that has. Now, Ms. Barish, who is in on the on the first wing as you come into the board, with a little playground is for the kids. She has one of the older classrooms, which I was told uh used to be the library. It's huge. It is huge. It's a huge classroom. And um, she is able to still maintain her her tables because the classroom is so large. So we are going to have to look classroom by classroom to um really see how we can maneuver and then talk to the parents and with the principal and also the teachers. All right, there's X amount of students in this classroom in this grade level. There's this example that there are twenty-four kids. I have um twenty that are coming in for doing in-person, but I have four that are still out there doing distance learning. That may be a parental choice. Or it may be, maybe there was not enough space. So we want to find out whether those four within that class of twenty-four want to come to a classroom of all in-person instruction. And then we change the time and not have to do it in AM and maybe just have one full day and do that four days a week. But we're going to have to look classroom by classroom. Martin's done an outstanding job of putting together um spreadsheets where we know the square footage for each classroom that each teacher is here. And so what you're going to see right now with these pictures from Hoover School is what he and his staff did this morning and then had a conversation with Wendy in regarding to the three feet between students, between students uh chairs, as it says in the framework, as opposed to bodies, but it does say chairs. So Wendy, I'm going to let you take it on from here.
Thank you. I do want to thank Martin Servantis, our Director of Facilities and his staff. As you know, Wednesday is an asynchronous day, and so that is the time that his crew is able to go in and work on these um different setups. So what you see before you is a Hoover Middle School classroom at Hoover School with thirty desks, um, which are actually four feet apart. One slight obstacle, which I don't think is a deal breaker, is the fact that in the right-hand picture, there is a cabinet there with a a desk right up against it. So that teacher would have to plan accordingly and pull things out of the cabinet before school or after school or what have you. But with that, other than that, the room, as you can see, is nicely laid out. There is also not a lot of other furniture besides desks in the classroom. However, in our classrooms all throughout the district, and this was a great analysis that Martin and I worked on this morning, is looking at literally classroom by classroom with our current enrollment, what we expect to have next year in the grade levels and the classrooms that would be affected. And then addressing, you know, less than thirty-five, where we think we might have to just go in and take another second look and set it up for anticipation for next year, which is not bad out of four hundred teachers uh that we have in River City School District. And even those thirty, we're not too worried about it. Um, we do have a couple of middle school classrooms where there are more than thirty-one students in the room. So that is something we're going to zero in on. But we are looking at um every classroom by classroom. So that was a large analysis that was done this morning. Really great work, and thank you again to Martin. So let's go to the next slide, please. This next classroom is a Hoover second grade classroom with twenty-nine seats. There are twenty-nine students. That's what we were planning for. And these seats are three feet apart and six feet from the teacher's desk. Same with the prior picture. I should have pointed out it was six feet from the teacher's desk. But in this case, you can see the teacher's desk, which is the larger desk right in front here on the right side, the right picture with the hand wipes on top. But what in this picture, what I wanted to show you is that we have double desks. You can see in this or in the in these pictures, there's a double desk with a single desk right next to it. Because another concern we faced is whether or not we have enough single desks in the district. So could we leverage the double desks that we currently have and still maintain the proper three-feet seat-to-seat requirement uh in the framework? So this is an example of setting up a classroom with twenty-nine. And you can see in the left-hand picture that we still have a kidney table on the left side, uh which may not be appropriate. We had didn't pull that one out yet. But that row next to the cabinets, like in the previous slide, could also be utilized if need be. So this is second grade, and I know we're looking at smaller classes for next year. However, we wanted to figure out how we could maximize the situation in these settings. So that's what these slides are showing. Thank you.
And that was Hoover School. And as I said previously, what I where I was this morning was at a meeting for meeting with the kindergarten teachers and preschool teachers. And you in uh in Ms. Barstad's classroom, you can actually have twenty-five of those small desks and three feet apart. She had a class of twenty-five. Again, in Debbie Grigaro's classroom, it's a different story, but she has the tables and there's no way to get the three feet. She has to go to a smaller desk. But again, Pam Barish's room, she has, because she has a huge classroom that used to be the library. She's able to maintain her table and still get the three feet. So that's why we're going to have to look at this school by school, class by class, and working with, again, principal, teacher. Because if we have the opportunity to bring additional students back, parents want them back, and we can provide them with additional time all day and not do it A M P M in-person and virtual in the afternoon, or vice versa, however one is doing it. This would benefit our students. This would benefit our students and all our parents. So we are in the process, just started today, in the process to go school by school and. So again, thank you to Martin for all that hard work that he and staff did and those spreadsheets. And thank you to the K teachers that I got to meet with at Henry Ford today. And my fault, I forgot to take the pictures. I was going to have pictures, but I forgot. We were talking about other things and it just slipped my mind. Okay. So let's talk about the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year. I was at a superintendent's meeting yesterday. All of us were at this meeting. And. It is going to be. Definitely, as we were told. A full school year. We're going to start out as a full school year. With in-person instruction in California. I don't know if any of you actually heard Governor Newsom, I guess it was his. But I guess there's already a press release out on about his expectations for the fall, the twenty one, twenty two school year. As you are opening up. Now, at yesterday's superintendent's meeting. We yes, we will adhere to the three feet, but as we were told, we don't know if three feet will continue. Plan for the three feet, which we're all going to do. But as June fifteenth comes, where he says he is reopening California. The question that I asked, what does that mean for school districts? When he talks about reopening California. So. We are definitely going in that direction where we are going to open up in August. As we normally would. What we are going to do coming back, we know we are going to have to still wear masks. We know, as Wendy said, there'll be some type of testing. About the limited gatherings at school sites and so forth in regard to what staff meetings, by council meetings. Club meetings and so forth. That will still need to be virtual. Our board meetings still need to be virtual at this point in time. Until it changes. So the six foot distancing, as I said previously. Will still continue also when students are eating, especially if they're eating in the multi-use room slash cafeteria. It's really important that we come back and keep stressing this. Because there's a big socialization piece for children that they need. And there's also the emotional piece, which we are learning more and more about that. We really need to pay particular attention to, especially when more of our students are coming back to school. And that's part of our reopening plan when we start sharing that with the community. But I want you as board members to understand, we are opening up as we would normally open up. Like in this school year. There'll be some, like I say, three feet, three feet distancing in the classrooms. We'll be wearing masks, we'll be testing, as we said, we'll need it. There'll be these limited gatherings. Where we as superintendents asked for more guidance was in the middle school and the high school. Because you know, our middle school kids and our high school kids move from class to class. And. We know that, I guess sixteen years old and above, now receiving vaccine. And there is talk, but it has not been confirmed. That there may be vaccines for twelve, but before August. That was discussed yesterday. It's not for sure, but it looks like it may be possible. So. I want to let the community know, we're here, we're coming back stronger than ever. There is going to be, as Wendy prefaced a bit earlier, we're going to look at class size reduction in kindergarten first and second grade. And we are putting in different support services at each school site. So that we can help students in the area of language arts, in the area of social and emotional learning, mental health. And move forward. Next slide, please. That was a short discussion. Make sure, there is going to be a plan coming to you that we have just started. We are actually starting tomorrow, looking at the the different types of funding that is coming in.
Hi, I lost on the audio.
Can others hear Dr. Baker?
No, I love.
Yeah, no, somehow you're. I think your sound went away when you got to the discussions. Oh, there you are. You're back.
Let's try to see if you guys. I'm sure I can try to see the teacher. So, so. When we, starting tomorrow. We are, there are small cabinets meeting together tomorrow to review with Priscilla, who. Definitely is our guru when it comes to financing. To look at the different pots of money that California is receiving. From the federal government and also from the state. The state has some guidelines. The federal government has guidelines that we have to adhere to. The saving grace for us is this money does not need to be spent within just several months' time. Like we had to do when we went into shelter in place and when we were given money and it had to be done. And we'll, you have to spend it in a short period of time. That's not happening. For one group of money, it's. August of twenty two, I'm looking at Priscilla, August of twenty two. And for the other group of money, it is August of twenty four, if I'm not mistaken.
September, Dr. Baker.
September twenty four. Okay, perfect. So we want to make sure that we utilize those funds in the best manner we can to support our students. Money is to be spent on students with the exception of some dollars of percentage that needs to be spent. Under the guidelines from Governor Newsom. Ten percent of that dollar amount of the early learning opportunity dollars is from our statement. Ten percent need to be spent on paraprofessional in some manner. And so we really need to adhere to that. That's one guideline that is really bolded for us. With the rest of the guidelines, it is supporting students to make sure. That you are closing whatever gap occurred during the shelter in place during this virtual learning. And now we're coming back to school. One of the things that I've have spoken to each of you about is the lowering of class size in kindergarten first and second grade. Our foundation is really, really critical in the area of language arts and mathematics of the day the student steps into kindergarten. And continues first and second. And you know, one of the values that we have and the least for this school district and goal. Is to make sure that our students are at grade level when they hit third grade. Are they in second grade? When they go into third, we want them at grade level. So this is one matter in which we can assist our students. So as we. Continue to plan for the for the next school year. We will be rolling this plan out to you and getting your feedback. Liz will then, at the same time, be rolling out another plan. Which is the LCAP. And also the early learning opportunity dollars, right, from our statement. Is that what it's named? And so that will be coming before you also. Some of you sit on the LCAP committee. There are some. Community members that sit on the LCAP committee and are also working with Liz with those dollars. For LCAP and then also the dollars for the early learning opportunity. So. We want to look at the money and spend it wisely, very wisely. And we have time. It's not like previously, we didn't, you were just purchasing what you needed to make sure, number one, that everybody had Chromebooks. Number two, that all our teachers were up to date, their laptops were up to date. Number three, any other types of pieces that need to be put into place. So that students could learn effectively from home while their teacher was doing virtual instruction. The types of PD that was put in place, money was spent on. And then also the different platforms that we purchased that the teachers would be using with the students. So that plan is coming, is coming forward within the next few weeks. And then Liz's will be coming before you probably. I'm thinking sometime in May and then June and then it's approved at one of our board meetings in June. It's our last board meeting, I believe, with Priscilla's budget, with our budget for three years that needs to be submitted to the county office that. There's been. Talk from the state level, from legislators, the governor. About it's definitely the time to get back in person. We, at this time, I've decided not to pursue the. The idea of the virtual academy. And I know that I've talked to you about this previously when we meet on our weekly meetings. And listening to the discussions at the state level. The state leaders really want school districts to have all students return in person to their school campuses. Yes, I know there's going to be some hesitation from parents. But we are going to look at a plan which is utilized in a district further south from us. Where Liz, at one time, was the assistant superintendent for its services there. Where they did have. An independent study program. And they had, it was not really the teacher's responsibility at the school site to oversee it. But we, they hired additional staff to oversee it so the teacher wouldn't have to do that on top of what the teacher was doing in class. So we are. Looking at that, exploring it to see what that would change. The state has also taken note, from what I've been reading. That the full online learning does not work for children in the same manner that it may work for students who are at the college level, which I totally agree. And again, socialization, that socialization piece is the key for their development. So I'm going to continue to monitor the discussions, the discussions that are coming from the state level. And also this one that just came, like I said, today, right at at four fifteen, four forty five, whatever. About the outlook for the twenty one, twenty two school year. From the California Department of Public Health. The key factor is that, as I perused it, it says there's research and there's understanding of why one needs to get back to school. There's the oversight and the assistance that must be adhered to. Again, they talk about testing, as Wendy alluded to in her slot. They talk about vaccines and talk about community transmission and what that means. And when you look at where we are right now, since our students first came back. And yes, there have been notices that go home. I'm sorry, there's been a positive case, your child has been exposed to it, or our staff has been exposed to it. It has never transmitted throughout any school site where it's been. Out throughout any district office where it's been noted. So we have got everything in place so that we are safe. So we are moving forward and we are going to be coming back fully in August. I, and I also want to. Also reiterate that we are working together with our principals right now. And we'll be meeting with them on an individual basis, just to look at each classroom. The number of students that are enrolled in each classroom for in-person and the distance learning. And we're looking at the spaces of three feet. And where does that bring us? And then start talking to our parent communities. If this grade level is ready to come back, no longer has to do an in-person and a virtual instruction, but can do it in person only. Would you become, would you be ready to come back to school? Those four days, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and be there all day. Questions?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Baker and team for all that information. So we do have a couple of comment cards. I don't know, just a minute. I don't know if we want to take those first or if we want to have the board members comment, ask questions first. It's the pleasure of the board members.
I'm fine with comment cards first.
Yeah, I think comment cards first makes sense.
All right. Okay, great. So we'll take the two. We have two commenters on this agenda. We have Paulina. They go over and Catherine Stewart.
Hi, I can jump in. This is Paulina.
Oh, great. Welcome.
Great. Thank you so much for the information around the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two academic school year. My question is around any discussions that may be happening around bringing aftercare programs to campuses to accommodate working parents.
Excuse me. Do you want me to answer that briefly? You can answer briefly right now. So. We are working with, always been working with after-school programs. And so one of the items that we do consider each year is for after-school programs. To make sure that we do have classroom space that's available for them. That's number one. Number two, we do have partners at this point in time that do work with the Redwood City School District. We have the Boys and Girls Club. We have the Parks and Rec Department. We have the YMCA. We also have a private entity that works at two of our school sites, but I believe it do be for care and after-school care. Which is a Neighborhood Kids Corner at Clifford and at Cloud. What we have done in the past has all, we have also said that we would entertain. The idea of after-school program, but not the school district running the after-school program. For example, Kids Corner, which is Neighborhood's Kids Corner, which is at Cloud and Clifford. Rent classrooms from us. And so that's how they're able to have the before and the after. We are amenable to looking into that. So if there are daycare, or I shouldn't say daycare, but after-school providers or before-school providers. That would like to work with the Redwood City School District. Number one, let us know what neighborhood. Number two, there is an application to fill out and we will definitely see what we can do. It is a big need in our community. After-school care has always been a good need. And we try to do the best we can with our partners. But many times our partners have had difficulty in finding staff that they can hire to work with them. So. It's always in the forefront, I think, of my mind about after-school. But we are definitely amenable to working with outside.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Paulina. And if you'd, if you'd like to let us know what school you're at, we can, your students are at. We can also look into what's already in existence there as well.
Yeah, it'd be great. I was mostly interested, and I can follow up online. I don't need to derail the meeting. But essentially looking to see if Neighborhood Kids Corner is going to be coming back to Lloyd Cloud.
As far as I, I haven't heard anything different.
I'm sorry. I think that's a yes on our end, assuming it's a yes on their end, right? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, Catherine Stewart, you're next.
Hi, am I on?
Welcome, Catherine.
Hi.
Yeah, you're on. Welcome.
Thank you. So I had a couple of questions. One is, um, what happens, we're, we're on independent study right now. What happens if we want to stay in independent study in the fall? And then the next question is about, is there any plan to require, if, if they do come up with a safe, effective vaccine for children, is there going to be a requirement for all the students on campus, anybody who comes on campus to have the vaccine either for children or for parents? Is it going to ever be a requirement, the way that vaccinations are requirements, if you're doing background checks? And if you're going to be working in the classroom and all that other kind of stuff, um, for parents or for children? So those are basically my two basic questions is about independent study. What, what happens if we stay in independent study through the summer into the fall? My question is.
Okay, Catherine, so, okay, thank you. So, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and we're not going to have a back and forth on this, but I will allow onto your two questions. But we're not going to do a detailed back and forth, but thank you for your questions. Very much appreciated. Go ahead, Dr. Baker.
So for the independent study, that's something that we are looking into at this point in time. And this will, will be giving us an update on what that would look like. And then the other part on the vaccine, now remember the vaccine is under the emergency use, use authorization, I think, at this point in time. So it's not, it cannot be required from my understanding from our legal department. So an answer to that question, uh, probably not, Catherine, not until it's mandated.
Okay, thank you. Just wondered.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I did want to add to that because it's come up in our call, our school board calls with Nancy McGee and others, and they did say very much the same thing. Of course, these were approved on an emergency basis. If they actually make it through the regular process, it could very well become mandated similar to other vaccines. But until then, there's not the legal ability for us to make it a requirement, is what we're told at this point. But again, guidelines change every hour, every day, every, all right, thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the end of, yeah, thank you. That's the end of our, uh, public comments. So with board, board members, I'm sure you've got some questions or comments. We'll just open it up.
Um, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank, um, Dr. Baker and all the principals and all the staff that have been working to bring the students back. It's been really exciting to see kids back on campus. And Dr. Baker, like you said, we got to be at Adelante Selby the other day, and it was just fantastic to see how happy the kids were to be back. And I, I do know, um, you know, the, the first week is always tough with drop-off. Even, you know, when we start school in August, there's always a lot of traffic. In my personal experience with, um, I have kids at three of our schools. And even this week, drop-off and pickup has been a lot smoother already. So I think that people are just getting into their groove. Um, and so thank the community and the parents for being patient as we, um, figure out how to get back into the, into the groove of dropping off and picking up. And I'm just really looking forward to seeing what the fall is going to look like and, um, getting back to a little bit more normal than, than we are right now too. Um, and then I do want to make a comment too. You talked about the vaccines. I think, um, it does open up to sixteen and up starting tomorrow. And although I understand there is a, um, a supply issue in San Mateo County. So if you have, you know, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds that you're hoping to get vaccinated, it might not be as, um, as easy as we would hope. And then on the call today with the, um, elected officials in the county, Mike and Alyssa, I think you both were there, so correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounded like they might actually be approving the emergencies for twelve to fifteen-year-olds in the next couple of weeks. So that would be fantastic. But again, uh, supply issue there too. So I think that's all I had to add.
And it, yeah, and I might just add that one of the things that I know we heard through the chat at the meeting today, as well as just in talking to some other people, if you have the means of a vehicle or public transportation to go out of doses available. So I do know that some people are doing that, but hopefully, at some point, we'll be getting more supply. There has been a glitch due to the Johnson and Johnson, um, this week.
So Alyssa.
But yeah, it was good news. I mean, we're moving in the right. Oh.
I just wanted to clarify. I think you said that at the call today, they did mention if you have the, uh, the ability to, to go somewhere else into a different county to do that, right, to get the vaccine? Is that what I heard?
Because other counties have, yes, other counties are getting more doses than our county. And the demand just may not be as high. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, others?
Sure, it's good. Um, thanks for sharing some, yeah, thanks for sharing some of the plans for twenty-one, twenty-two. I fully support the in-person plan. Um, that doesn't come as a surprise because you've been letting us know, but, um, sharing it here tonight is good to hear. For the rest of this year, there's, you know, there's forty percent of students that are still, forty, forty-plus percent of students that are still full distance learning. Is, is the expectation that, I, I guess you have to go out and ask, that's part of what the, the part of the process now is to go back and find out how many of them would come back if they were given the full day? Okay, and the, um, I'm just curious, like, if we're just, we're starting the process now of measuring the rooms and that happens only on Wednesday, so when do you, or does that happen at other time? I guess I'm just wondering, like, when do you think we'll have an idea of what that plan might look like? Should we be prioritizing groups of students, classrooms, uh, anything like that, if it's going to take a while?
So what we're doing, yes, Wednesday's definitely is a great day because that's the teacher planning day. You have the opportunity to, uh, talk to the teacher and then also work with the principal. Wednesdays are great, but we were also thinking that, um, we could do weekends. By doing weekends, though, we have to pay overtime for our staff, which, you know, the, the dollars are there for that type of work. Because that's what, you know, it should be utilized in that matter. So I will meet with, uh, with Wendy and with Martin to see what this would look like. I'm looking definitely, you know, to look at our K-two's first. Because you don't see, not because I was an elementary school teacher, but kindergarten teacher to start out with. But you know, that foundation is really important. Uh, it's very important for, 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 for guys when they're coming into the, into this world. And, um, we really want to make sure that we're, we're getting it really a, a solid foundation in language arts and mathematics. And our goal is to make sure that they're reading at grade level when they hit third grade. You know, there's going to be bumps along the road and we're going to be able to work through those bumps. But I just want to start, I really want to see if I can get as many kindergarten and second graders back first. Now, there's still a problem, there's, it's not a problem, it's a concern, a challenge, I should say. Or as one of my colleagues says, opportunities all the time. He knows who he is, that, that he's, uh, out there as, I mean, I, um. What it is, it's middle school, you know, the middle still has, you know, that, those guidelines have not changed. They, if you're going to move the kids around, um, they want to make sure that, you know, they're not mixing with other kids. But and it's hard to, because you have that schedule and you have kids coming from all over. So that's something that we're all, you know, grappling with and see how we can best handle it. Some schools, um, that we find in our district right now are doing the simultaneous. But to bring kids back and have them move from one class to another, just do it and do it in a staggered way, which we have some middle school classrooms that are doing that right now. But to do it as a whole group, we really have to watch, because that has not been something that you can discard and move forward and do. So, um, but like I say, our kindergarten second and then move on up. And our principals, um, well, well, Wendy was working with the principal at Hootage Day. And, uh, he is looking at, you know, you know, definitely his primary, but also he's looking at, you, you saw his middle school. He has a middle school teacher, I believe that wants all the kids back, if I'm not mistaken. So, um, an answer to your question, Mike, when will you find out, uh, what are the, who are the students, how many students are coming back, at what schools? Hopefully that we can work on this with, with Martin on Thursday and Friday, give you a good schedule calling, and then maybe by next week. I know we have another board meeting next week, so are you there? And then by the following board meeting, I hope we can have you.
And with, I mean, I guess, did I meet myself? No, I didn't. Okay. With, uh, forty percent, um, out, uh, you know, and as, as that changes, I'm wondering if we should be looking at those numbers disaggregated a bit. I don't know if that would change our plan, but it's really tough to tell which students are choosing to come back, you know, when we're only looking at it across the district and it's such a large number. It's hard to understand, like, are we hitting the populations that we think really would benefit from coming back to in-person? Are we not? Uh, it just, you know, prioritizing by grade level is great too, but I think there's other dimensions that it might be, um, helpful to look at.
That's just where we start. We start with, with the back, but it's not to say that you just do that. For example, to get, the example I gave at Hoover, that was a second-grade classroom. We're looking at a seventh-grade one also. So, uh, it's not that I'm, I'm going to say to the principals, no, you can't do that. Don't start there. I want them to, to definitely think about the K-two's and then let's move, let's move. The other thing that you need to be cognizant of is we're going to have parents who say, no, they can't do that.
Right.
And, um, many of you have been at coffees with me, many of you have been at the superintendent's council with me, where I've asked a question and, um, or maybe I haven't even asked a question, but the parents are very adamant they're not coming back. For a variety of reasons, for a variety of reasons. So, um, we will do our due diligence to really, um, talk to our parents that if you're afraid because the virus is holding you back, let us tell you about how safe it is. Why don't you come see how safe it is? Because some of our principals have done an outstanding job, and I'm speaking in the areas of the Bayside area, trying to get as many students back as they can. But then there are some parents that are very adamant, and I know, um, Cecilia and Maria and I think Mike, and I think all of you have been at least at one meeting, but we've got a parent that really voices the reason why they're not coming back. And, and we're not going to probably change that idea. So we're still going to have to provide them with the virtual instruction for the remainder of this year.
Right, and many of them have opportunities actually for a full day right now through a mixture of in-person and hubs. And, and so, I mean, there, there are going to be some populations where even moving to three feet may not make a difference. And so I just, it's something to balance, right? And so, yeah, I just was wondering, how, how do we get the insight into, are we, so that we're not making a decision that has an outsized impact on a population that we really want to be helping and not hurting? Or if we're going to reduce, you know, instruction time one way or the other? Well, I, I know these are all complex and I understand that you're working on the plan, so I'm not trying to say that I expect the answer tonight, but those are kind of the things that I, I would be looking for to, to hear how they were addressed in the plans.
And, and just remember, we're always looking at it when we go out with the principals, we're always looking at it through that equity lens now. Remember, we have that policy and we're looking at it through that lens.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks, thanks for sharing that.
Any one else?
So, um, I would like to say that, again, I appreciate everything that our facilities has been doing to get kids back on campus. Um, at our first service department and Classified as well. My, um, question would just be, you just talked about the different parents that would probably still be hesitant to bring their kids back to school. Now, do we know, um, when, I, I know you're saying principals are talking to parents, but do we know if we've reached most of the parents so that they are aware what we are planning on doing next year? And hopefully, again, we will be back to normal. Um, and if so, if the principals are not able to reach those parents, how else are we thinking of communicating with that population that would be us, you know, feel a little hesitant to come back? Because I would think an early notification would be best so that they can start making plans for next year. Um, so that would be my first question, my first question.
So at the superintendent's advisory council on Monday evening, what I stated was that we really need to utilize, um, definitely our communications department to really help us with this. Jorge King Dana and Michelle Ramon are outstanding when it comes to working in that arena. So that is, uh, a plan that they are putting into place at this point in time to inform parents vis-à-vis whether it be a webinar, whether it be a podcast, whether it be, um, a virtual meeting as this, but to make parents informed, uh, in many different ways. So that is one way. If the, and of course, the principal, we want the principal involved because the principal is someone that I believe in many of our Bayside communities definitely look to the principal for answers. They, um, definitely respect and want to work with them. So our principals will be heavily involved in communication things going on, not only for the remainder of this year, but also for next year, for getting started for next year. Cecilia, I don't know if you're, if you remember, normally during this time of the year and, and by the end of April, we're with you with the plan for the fall already. It is kind of, you know, the, the pandemic kind of, not that we took a backseat, it's just that we're, we're changing things, um, every week it seems just about. And then now with this plan that I haven't even read, this outlook plan that we just got this afternoon, um, I will read it very carefully to make sure that we're, we're doing it virtually. But we will, uh, communicate with parents probably to the point where parents tell us, you know, stop it, stop texting me, I don't want to hear it. It's, it'll probably get to that point and Jorge, who's on this call, understands what I'm talking about. And I think Maria does too, because she used to hear when she was at the Fair Oaks Library, why does he keep texting me? Why do we get all these messages? So, um, but that's pretty part of it. Is that, that I've asked, is that helping with that question?
It does. And do appreciate, and what I'm trying to say is, I just want to, I know that you guys do communicate well. As a matter of fact, I do think you guys do communicate a lot. Again, I'm a parent of the district, I get all the texts, the emails, and I really appreciate it. Um, just being that this is kind of a, you know, not to say a sore subject, but just very important that our parents know what's going to happen next year. Because I'm, I'm also thinking, if some of the parents that were hesitant to bring their kids back this time around was because of the unknown hours of the day, whether it was going to be two or three hours, and those working parents would have a harder time, you know, dropping off and picking up kids. But knowing that next year, again, if they're willing to bring their kids back to school, it will be, um, you know, from what we've been talking, somewhat of a normal school year, then again, that may just change their mind. And I know it's going to take some time, you know, for people to get back to, you know, normal. Like Janet mentioned, the drop-off and pickup could be a little crazy. But I think, um, even just listening to, um, Ms. Priya, Priya Pritas, is that, am I pronouncing it correctly, uh, from Roy Cloud, saying how, you know, excited her kids were, and, you know, of course, we heard from other, uh, principals and know that the kids are back into the classroom, are very happy. So, um, again, we are going in the right direction. It's taking some time. But again, we are, you know, doing the best we can for our Redwood City community. But again, we are, you know, doing the best we can for our Redwood City community. So that's my only comment. I really appreciate, again, everyone does for the Redwood City kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And what else?
I would just like to say, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone as well. I know that everyone's working really hard and I really appreciate your flexibility because it seems that there are changes every week, sometimes every hour. And you guys have been just wonderful at adjusting and doing what needs to be done. I am looking forward to having the students return in person. I have seen the children playing out there and hear them talking. And I know that the ones that are on campus are really happy to be back. I also understand the concern of the parents, but I think as we continue with the vaccination, some of those concerns may be lessened. And I agree with Cecilia that if we tell the parents that there will be school five days a week and they'll have after-school care and all the things that have worried them, I think that some may be a little bit less hesitant to send their students back to school full-time next year. And like I said, I'm just very grateful to everyone in the school district for all the efforts they put in to make sure our students get educated.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I know I have a very unstable connection. Are you able to even understand me?
Crackly.
Okay. Crackly. All right. Well, I do have a few questions, but I think what I'll do, John, is I don't think everybody, I'll just check in with you this week. And then if they seem important enough, we can bring them back to the, to the next board meeting since this topic is there all the time. Since I'm having a hard time sort of communicating tonight, they're more specific. But I did want to say for our audience, and maybe you can repeat this if it's not clear, is we do plan on providing a lot of additional supports for all students and particularly for those students that have the most need and with an equity lens. And that's the monies that you were talking about tonight. You didn't detail out what those will look like for both this year and next year. But maybe at the next meeting, we could highlight, and of course, we haven't approved the budget, so we need to do that. But I just want to ensure the audience that there are going to be a lot of additional supports. And I think things that we've been hearing from parents and students that are needed. So I don't know if you want to just speak to that at a high level, or we can talk about it more detailed at one of our next meetings.
So as I said, tomorrow morning, we are meeting in regard to what we had discussed previously that I met with each of you and know pretty much what the blueprint is. What we need to make sure now is that according to the guidelines, the piece that is still unknown is the LCAP because Liz is working on that. Of course, the ELO, equal learning, whatever. There's so many acronyms floating around now, that that one specific dollars coming from the state, which she needs to work on alongside with the LCAP, which also needs a specific plan, a different template, from what I understand, right? So, but I can bring you kind of an overview, which you will not approve because Priscilla will not have the three-year budget down the road for the next three years down the road until the end of June. But we'll do it as, I can do it in different pieces for each, for each board meeting. For example, you all know about the K two, class size reduction for K two, that's a given. We really want to do that. There's that. And when you're talking about additional supports, there's additional support when it comes to a reading specialist at a school site. If you have the kindergarten and first and the second grade, you're going to get an addition, you'll get a reading specialist. Then we also talked about, we needed a health professional at each school site to assist us in the needs of the social emotional piece, the piece of the mental, not that one is, not that the child's stable, but the mental securities, so forth, that a child may have coming back. And then also what they faced during the time where they were doing nothing but ritual learning and looking straight at a camera. So that, those are given. Other pieces that are coming down the pike, for example, those K eight schools that have the sixth, seventh and eighth grade PE teachers, remember, we only pay point five, we're paying the full thing. And because it used to be, and these are what the dollars should be used to augment what school sites are spending their monies on. It used to be that we gave, it used to be, it is, we gave them the point five and then they would go to their PTOs or they would go to Measure U or they would go out to upside grants and see what they could get to have a one FTE. So, so that's kind of the high level right now. And then there's all this, these other pieces, which I can bring you some pieces at each board meeting. How's that? The only pieces I will not bring you is the piece that Liz is working on because there's a lot of, she has to do a lot of work with the LCAP group. And also with that group, she's also going to do some work on that other template with the other dollars. Remember, we're also putting five hundred thousand dollars into summer school this year, into the summer school that we agreed on. So that's.
Yeah, maybe at our next board meeting, you could talk a little bit about the summer school. And I don't, has the information gone out to families for planning purposes? Because I know we're going to open it up, I think, to any student, right, who's interested in our district?
So do you want me to answer that one, Dr. Baker? So the information we're thinking will be going out hopefully by the end of this week. Because many of us who are working on this haven't done this before. It's probably taking a little bit longer. And we're also working in collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club. And so there are some restrictions that we needed to follow as well. So primarily, the first people who will be invited will be the children who live in the Garfield, Taft, Hoover and Roosevelt and Kennedy area. And then our migrant students as well. And then our hope is that there will, there will be additional space in the summer school and we can open up to more students as well. But our priority, because of the Boys and Girls Club, are the students who live in those areas. So that's, that's the first wave of applications that we'll receive. And then we'll see how much spacers after that.
And the other thing that you need to know is that we're not able to use Garfield here. We're not able to use Taft. And the reason for not being able to use that is the amount of instruction that's going on at those two school sites. So we are going to need to move to Roosevelt, my understanding, for one of the schools.
Right. And so we actually have a small program at Taft. There are a few rooms available. E S Y will be there as well. And so Anna has made a few rooms available. But most of the program will be at Hoover and at Roosevelt, and then a few classrooms at Kennedy.
And then we have a special ed, the E S Y, which is going to be at.
Adelante Selby and a Taft for the preschool.
Right, right. And then we have some schools that are also planning on doing some additional summer camps or something that they're putting together. And we can bring that information to you also, that they utilize those dollars in that country. Now, the piece that, as you know, Samtrans is not running, right, for, for schools. And we have students in school right now that need transportation. And I just want to remind each of you, our, well, we're now, we're at six feet, but now we're at three. But still, even at three feet, we cannot accommodate all our students who need the transportation. So we are chartering, I should not say chartering, we have a contract with a charter group, the school buses. And the contract is a thousand twenty-five dollars per day until last day of school. Now, we're having summer school and we need to provide transportation for those kids. Depending on where we are with the spacing and everything, I mean, if we could do it ourselves, not have to worry about the spacing, we'd be fine. I don't think that's going to change at that time. So we will most likely be chartering, I mean, doing a contract with this charter group that has school buses. And probably probably it was really disheartening to hear when Martin called over spring break. It was Friday, right, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, spring break and say, it's not going to work. It's not going to work. This, this, this charter that we thought we could use, you know, those really nice huge coach buses. And it was a flat fee of seventy-five K for as often as we were using it. While they couldn't do it, guidelines don't allow them, you know, to stop doing it. So we will have to go with the other group. And like I say, it's disheartening to think that they may be taking advantage of school districts now because they know we need the buses. And so, but we have the dollars from funding, so using it. We have to get our transport. We have to get them to school, right? There's no, I don't know what, and I know Mark, we're working with Samtrans or any groups or transportation managers who are working with Samtrans. Very helpful. Hopefully it'll change in the fall.
All right. Well, thank you very much. It's really exciting to see where we're at today compared to where we were last year around this time, right? So we're definitely moving in the right direction. So thank you so much. So it is nine o'clock. Would you like to take a five-minute break or do you want to push through the agenda? It's up to you guys. I'm fine to keep going.
I was going to say push through. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, we will do that. All right. So we are on to the consent items. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Maria? Cecilia, seconds. Roll call vote.
Wells?
Aye.
Percy Lawson?
Aye.
Percy Marcus?
Aye.
Vice President Deusilcom?
Aye.
President Mackerel?
Aye.
Okay, on to the action items. We have fourteen point one, adoption of resolution twenty, reduction of certain classified services.
Yes, HR department is bringing forward to you tonight a reduction of certain classified services for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And we will be discussing the effects of this, should the board approve with C S C A tomorrow. And some of these positions actually are on this agenda tonight because school sites have not been able to commit to funding for next school year. So that is a possibility that some of these may return at a later date, should that come to fruition. Are there any questions?
All right. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, Cecilia and Janet?
Percy Wells?
Aye.
Percy Lawson?
Aye.
Percy Marcus?
Aye.
Vice President Deusilcom?
Aye.
President Mackerel?
Aye.
All right, fourteen point two, approval of additional personnel needed for twenty twenty-one.
Yes, thank you. So tonight, this position, which will support the special ed department for a certified behavior analyst, whose primary role is to assist with behavior supports for students. Currently, we have twenty-four students who need more behavior supports than we're able to assist with currently in our district. And so this is an opportunity for a management position to come in and assist with training of our staff on how to assist students along multiple items as outlined in the board memo. And so I'm bringing this to you tonight because we're requesting this position to start as soon as possible for, and assumingly in the twenty twenty-one school year, rather than waiting for twenty-one, twenty-two. Are there any questions regarding the position?
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Second.
Mike and Janet, roll call vote, please.
Percy Wells?
Aye.
Percy Lawson?
Aye.
Percy Marcus?
Aye.
Vice President Deusilcom?
Aye.
President Mackerel?
Aye.
All right, fourteen point through three, recommendation regarding the approval of classified general leave requests.
Any questions from the board regarding this topic?
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Cecilia and Maria? Roll call vote.
Percy Wells?
Aye.
Percy Lawson?
Aye.
Percy Marcus?
Aye.
Vice President Deusilcom?
Aye.
President Mackerel?
Aye.
All right. So we're on to fifteen point one, report from board members and superintendent. Who would like to go first? Or just jump on in?
I attended the. Oh. I attended the superintendent.
Go ahead, Cecilia and Mike.
Sorry, did you guys hear me? So just, I have to report that I attended the superintendent advisory camp. And that's it.
I went to the LCAP meeting, I think it was earlier this week, actually. And I just wanted to say to Liz that it was really well-run. It was an engaging, really engaging agenda. And the breakout rooms were super informative. So thanks for putting it together.
I did the coffee with Dr. Baker at Taft and Cecilia was also there. It was a very nice meeting.
So Alyssa and I had a workforce housing meeting preparing for the study session today, this evening. And then Dr. Baker and I went to the Redwood City Chamber Education Committee meeting last week, I believe. And then again, it was at Adelante Selby and it was my first time on a school campus in over a year. So that was fantastic and got to tour the, the new front office building, which was fantastic. And actually Warren walked me around the whole campus to kind of just see all the updates that have happened since then. So it's looking great there and highly recommend visiting when you get a chance.
That's so exciting, Janet. I could hardly wait to get out on a site. Has been a long time. All right. So let's see, Mike and I had the audit meeting to prepare for the board meeting tonight. I had the LCAP meeting along with Mike and yeah, thank you, Liz. That was really well done. I mean, it's not easy to do these meetings over Zoom and you did a really good job getting input from everybody. And let's see, I went to the Samatail County School Boards Association. We had a session on mental health and we got to hear from some of the programs that are going on in the county, including the one, it's that Caris Health or something. What's the new one, Dr. Baker?
It's not, it's not Caris, Wendy, what is it?
Carisolus?
Carisolus, right, the.
Carisolus, Carisolus. Yeah, that's available both to our staff and to students, which is really wonderful. So hopefully we can roll that out and that'll be helpful to our community. And I intended the superintendent advisory committee, those are always really helpful to hear from teachers, staff and parents. And I intended the superintendent advisory committee. Those are always really helpful to hear from teachers, staff and parents about your various ideas and direction. So thank you for having those. And then I attended a CSBA, both Board Development Committee meeting as well as a Climate Action Task Force meeting. And then I did work on some advocacy around AB 841 with the California School Boards Association and also just as board president for the Redwood City School District. And this is money that will be provided by the California Energy Commission. It was the filtering bill, if you remember it. And it's for indoor air quality for things like sensors and HVAC repairs and upgrades. And some of us had concerns that they were going to be doing first come, first served. They may still be doing that, but what we wanted to see was an allocation out to all school districts that have the need. So done more on an equity basis. So we'll see if the comments actually go. A fair amount of time actually on this particular, that's it, Dr. Baker.
I think you've mentioned everything. The only thing that I wanted to mention is you all know we're getting a Kent ward, right? In regard to the equity pieces that we have been doing for the last few years. So thank you, Linda. Linda put it together. She's also working on the video right now. So it is coming up in May and so you have to RSVP.
Yeah, May, May 7th.
So it'd be great for you all to be there and any of, you know, district staff, community members that want to go. The video, that will look great. I know you're working on it with Robert and everything. So it'll turn out really well like that. So congratulations, Linda. Thank you.
To the board. Thank you, guys, all.
That's it.
I'm muted. All right. Thank you. So let's see, let me see where we're at. We already did 16.1. Any correspondence? We're still getting a few emails, but they've really tapered off since we've gotten back in person. So that says a lot, I think, about our district and where we're at. So it's been a collective community effort to get there. Other businesses. Did items for future agenda?
So Ellie.
Board agenda count, oh, go ahead, Dr.
We need to, for the, Ellie, we need to add an additional meeting. I'm not mistaken.
Yes. So the business office asked on what additional board meetings we're having for the month of June. So as of now, we have June 2nd, June 23rd as confirmed board meetings, regular board meetings. And June 16th is a placeholder. So we need to determine whether we want to add a June 30th special board meeting.
And the rationale for this is that, number one, during June, you always receive the first reading and the first information, reading and also information regarding the LCAP. And I guess prior to that, 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 that will be done in June sometime. And then at the end of June, the LCAP is approved. But then, and Liz, this is where I need your assistance, on June 1st, is that when the other plan needs to be presented to the board or prior to June 1st?
It needs to be approved by the board on or before June 1st. And then we need to send it to the county office within five days for the ELO. For the LCAP, it needs to have a public hearing and then approved by the board by June 30th, along with the budget, all sorts of stuff. And then that is also sent to the county office.
So definitely, I believe the 30th is one that we need. We have put a placeholder for the 16th. And the reason why the placeholder was there for the 16th was always in case we needed some additional time for the LCAP. So.
All right, Dr. Baker. Also in addition, for this reporting period, we are also going to add the budget overview for parents. That is going to be part of the budget adoption. So we have the LCAP, we have the budget and the budget overview in addition to the expanded learning opportunity grant, LCAP or plan. Yeah. So there's so many reports that are going to be presented to the board and that require engagement to the public. It's, it's, you know, the timeline is kind of difficult at this time.
By, by keeping the 16th, which was a placeholder, will that help with that? With all the different types of engagement pieces that need to take place? So that would mean that we'd have one on the, what's, what's the meeting before the 16th, Ellie, again? I don't have my calendar here.
So the confirmed regular board meetings are June 2nd, June 23rd, June 16th being a placeholder.
And then, then, then the other that we were talking about was June, the June 30th, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Alyssa?
All right. So may, yeah, I was just going to say, because I, what I thought I just heard is that the ELO needs to be approved before June 1st. So the June 2nd date is not for that particular item then, right? That would be for other things.
Correct.
Just to clarify, right? So you'll be putting that on the May agenda then. Okay. So, Dr. Baker, maybe we can, at our next meeting next week, kind of go over things. I'd just like to be respectful of people's time. If we need four meetings for June, so be it. But if we can do it in three meetings, depending upon when things are due, I'd like to also do that. I'm just cognizant of how many meetings we've had and I know it's a lot of work for staff, it's a lot of extra time. So maybe we could do that, but, but let's tentatively say 6:30. Is that going to be okay with folks? It does sound like we're going to need. What I'd like to do is look, but we can, because we're having four meetings in June.
Right. But maybe we don't need the June 2nd, but I'll, let me, let me talk to, to staff and see where we are and then I'll bring that back.
That'd be great. Yeah, because it's an extra, you know, three hours out of people's time, plus all the prep and, you know. Okay. So, so, but it sounds like 6:30 is, is, we're going to need that and probably 6:16 just due to the LCAP and the budget, correct? Is that what Priscilla and Liz are saying?
It looks like the 16th, like the 30th, and then we'll talk, I'll talk with staff this week. And it may, maybe the third, maybe the 23rd, maybe the 20th.
Okay. All right. So we can touch base on that. And then circle back with folks. All right. Great. Okay. Anything else on the calendar? All right. So procedurally, yeah, I think, you know, we do need to go back into our closed session. So I don't think we adjourned the meeting at this point. But I think, can, Kyle, can we still get back on to that closed session Zoom, the other one we had?
I don't believe so. I'll have to create a new one.
Okay. So could you create one for the board members? Wendy, Priscilla and Sean?
Sure. I'll do that and I'll have that set up in just a minute and I'll send it out to everyone.
Okay, great. And hopefully we can wrap up our closed session conversation pretty quickly. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, all of our attendees for being here. So appreciate it. Thank you, panelists, all the staff. You guys are doing a great job. Really appreciate it.